fundraiser for the MSPCA. Robotics Club went to two day state competition in Framingham over February break and earned the judges award. This is the first award for the team in over a decade. We also held many sports achievements over the winter, as you guys just heard. I did highlight Elliot Hong and Corinne Foley. March 4th, the class of 2027 had a course selection and MCAS preparation assembly and will soon speak to their guidance counselors to look to lock in classes for junior year. One of the opportunities given to these students is the choice of concurrent enrollment classes. This will allow students to take free requisite courses in high school rather than taking them in college. To take these courses, you must receive an ELA, PSAT, or SAT score of 480 or higher, 85% or higher in the subjects in the subject specific course, 3.0 or higher GPA, and a subject matter teacher recommendation. Tuesday, the 17th, the Anti-Bullying Club held the St. Patrick's Day Party, which included bingo and many fun prizes. They'll meet again April 8th to make your own comic books. Last Friday, we held our annual gondola, I don't think it was last Friday, I think it was the Friday before, excuse me. We held our annual gondola race in which students create boats out of cardboard and duct tape and race them in the swimming pool. The purpose is to support the traveling Rams who are going to Italy this year. After the race, the participants and guests enjoyed a pasta dinner. The guidance department has put together numerous visits from local colleges, including the following: Middlesex Community College, Fitchburg State, Savannah College of Art and Design, University of Rhode Island, Plymouth State, Northern Essex, Bishop's University, UMass Lowell, and Curry College. They've also scheduled visits from the US Air Force and provided a list of recommendations to ask admission representatives. Guidance has shared that UMass Lowell is offering free tuition to eligible students and so is Harvard. Sophomores received a PSAT assembly yesterday, March 24th. The registration for the exam ends March 28th. Students will take the test April 16th. The SATs will take place March 8th, May 3rd, and June 7th. The SATs cost $68. To practice, students are encouraged to use Khan Academy and Blue Book. This is a week 14, the final week of exploratory for freshmen. This weekend, they will choose their top three favorite shops and be placed permanently by the end of next week to begin their shop April 7th. Class of 2029 is preparing for their placement testing, which will take place April 5th. April 12th, students or Shawshank will host a culture fair for students and they will potentially gain extra credit in many of their history classes. April 28th, freshman students will receive a health screening regarding the use of alcohol, nicotine, tobacco, and drugs. Drama Club has been working closely with our music club as they prepare for the showing of The Little Mermaid Jr. They have also incorporated carpentry, DVC, graphics, drafting, culinary, and cosmetology. Shows will be hosted May 9th at 6:30 and May 10th at 10:30. Lastly, this week as ELA and CAS week, sophomores will take the test March 25th and 26th. Sophomore class rings are also ready for pickup as of yesterday, March 24th, for those who ordered them.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Don't miss me too much before April.
Thank you guys.
Good luck with your speech contest upcoming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I do not believe we have anybody for public comments, correct? All right. Moving on to the consent agenda items, three items, the bill for attorney Greenspan, the bill for the amount of $27.77, KM Education Law, and the amount of $11.6875, and the minutes of February 25th, 2025 go over. Motion.
Can I make a motion when we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussions, questions, comments there in? Oh, thank you, fair enough. Just if there may know for some of her other public service, the consent agenda usually be sort of standard boilerplate items that we try to put them in one item rather than taking multiple votes. Thank you for that reminder. All right.
But there could be other stuff under there, it's not just minutes or.
Right. Yeah.
And you can always pull something, if there's something you want to discuss more, you can always pull it out and have that conversation.
And these are legal bills, right?
Yes.
Well, the KM, that's actually, this one here is actually our special attorney.
Oh.
Mr. Greenspan is our attorney. KM Education Law is our special ed, legal service, and of course the minutes.
That was actually changed recently, prior to turning.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor, please indicate aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay. All right, thank you.
So there's a folder going around. It's my turn, right, Brian?
It is definitely your turn.
Okay, I just jumped in, but I didn't, you didn't tell me to jump in.
No, no, keep it moving, keep it moving.
Okay, okay. There's a few things in this folder that's going around. One of the items we're going to talk about in a little while under new business, but first, Brian requested that we take a look at our Shawshank federal grants. So you're going to see the sheet that says Shawshank federal grants update, that's the first one I'm looking at. I went back to FY23 for that information, and I also included how we spend these grants. And then there's behind that sheet, there's an explanation of what these grants are. So you can, I didn't make sense to double side it in case you want to look at it side by side when I talk about the grants. So you'll notice for federal grants, we receive about $750,000 a year on federal grants. They all serve a different purpose. We, the IDA is for individuals with disabilities, and you can see that that is the one where we get the most money. So that that grant would have the largest impact if it went away. Some other grants that have come along, the IEP grant, which I, that one did not exist, I don't think, in FY23, but it's not something that we've received every year.
So they updated that, and for those of you that don't know, they updated the IEP format, and they had given grants out for two years for districts to kind of come in compliance and provide training and professional development for staff to get up to speed with the new format.
Right. And then Title I, which is another grant you've probably heard about, because I think we talk about Title I a lot, that's, you know, about $100,000 we get for that every year, and you can see the categories at all of these grants, how they're paid out. So professional salaries is anyone that is working on a grant and receives, is paying towards MTRS retirement. Professional salaries that are non-MTRS are mostly Paris. Other salaries, like the grant writer, some random things might come up through other salaries depending on the grant. Contracted services also is grant dependent, supplies and materials, other expenses, equipment, that's our capital line, and then MTRS, they can pay a portion of the benefits. So I can't predict what's going to happen with federal grants over the next couple of years, but it's good to look at where we stand now, and maybe next budget season we talk about, we'll probably have more information by then, but if we need to replace funding through the general fund, if grants go away, that would be a major discussion that we would have to have. And we wouldn't be the only district having that issue if it's, if it does happen, I think it will be among most schools. So any questions about grants?
I just want to say, I really appreciate you doing this because I think it has become in light of the unpredictability, to say the least, of directives coming out of Washington. Many states are preparing for the fact that maybe grants that they would normally give out at the local level will not be funded or available or will be held up in some fashion. And there is a lack of predictability to it, to say the least, but at least it helps us to know what our level of vulnerability is. Should something unusual happen, the other day I'd seen that there was some concern from school districts, along with local food pantries, you know, had a source of revenue that they use for cafeteria programs that were apparently on the shopping block, and so they were having to reconsider, again, how they might fund those in the absence of the established federal funding. So this is helpful for us to know we're not as vulnerable as some districts.
Right.
But there is a level of vulnerability there.
And the Perkins Grant, the FC 400 strengthening career in technical ed, we do get a lot of equipment through that grant as well, so that would make, you know, we're just anticipating anything could, it could go in either direction, and when we have an idea, if we get to the point that we have to replace some of this funding, then we'll have to talk about it then. So that's the first thing.
It's always been like that every year, you never know.
Yeah. Yep.
I think it's fair to say there's a little more unpredictability right now.
Maybe in the online, not in mine. Go ahead.
Well, there is when you're transferring basically what they're talking about doing, when you're transferring basically closing a part of education and basically transferring it over to the Small Business Administration, I mean, I think there is some concern there, especially where you look at the last three years when, you know, 60% of this is coming from this grant here, to me that is a greatest concern.
So Jenna, what percent of the overall budget is, are the federal funds? Do you have a sense?
I mean, so that we don't really mix it with the general funds, but our budget's about 38 million.
So then this is what, just a small percentage?
And it would be above and beyond, right, and it would be above and beyond that 38 million, so it's not budgeted in, we do it, it's above and beyond that.
Yeah, I mean, grand scheme of things, I mean, you're talking, not to play it down, like 38 million.
Right, right.
It is, but it is still important, not just.
It would affect, think decisions that we would make about money going into other funds and things like that.
2%.
Right?
And then the other thing I just wanted to draw your attention to is the UNIS report that I give you monthly. We're going to get into more detail with this later, I won't be speaking about it, the subcommittee will be speaking about it, but I wanted to include this because I think there'll be some changes between this one and then the next time that we get together. And then on the back, I left the grant stuff out just for this meeting since we already discussed federal grants. In the bottom, you can see all the balances and all our accounts at the close of February.
Any questions there?
Anything else for Jenna to discuss? The lunch program, what are we hearing, anything?
I don't think that's been decided yet either.
Okay, so we got, I have, I'm trying to find something.
That's at least a million dollar program.
Governor Healey, I don't know, consider budgets.
Right, and breakfast and lunch, students get free breakfast and free lunch. So I have to say, and I don't know how anybody else feels since we've gone to this free lunch model, more kids are eating. We have, we're producing more meals in the kitchen, like Pauline keeps track of all of that, so students eating is really great in our eyes, and it's, doesn't have any stigma attached to it because everybody gets one meal, one breakfast and one lunch if they want it, so yeah.
So the cafeteria money, where's that coming from now?
So the cafeteria, that's a revolving fund. Yep. They have their own revolving.
Who uses that for?
So it covers all their salaries except for the director, she's in the general fund.
Well, thank you for doing this, it's made things much clearer.
Oh, good.
Okay, so, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, and we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. So again, just trying to keep people updated as to where we stand. Chairman O'Donnell had updated everybody, Bedford's town meeting was last night. Our budget was passed by the residents, and again, we thank them for their continued support. You can see Wilmington will be our next town meeting, followed by Tewksbury, Bill Ricka, and then Burlington will be May 12th. So we have a little bit of a lull here in meetings for myself and Ms. Lesko, and then we're going to staff fast and furious the first week of May, I think we have three of them in one week, so we'll come fast. As far as finance committees and ways and means go, the only one that we have outstanding is Burlington, which will take place Wednesday, April 9th. I believe the week before that, we have a meeting with the education subcommittee as well, so Burlington has a little bit of a different approach to it, but that's the way we've always operated with them, and I don't anticipate any concerns or issues coming out of that. Enrollment update, we were down two students in March, sorry, we were at 1272 for February, we had two students, we had two students, we actually had three students leave, but we had one student come in, so we had a ninth grade transfer from another vocational school. And again, it was a kind of a net loss of two students. You can see grade 10 and grade 11 still continue to lag behind pretty significantly when compared to the ninth grade and the 12th grade, so that, we've got to work that bubble out of the system before we see those numbers rebound significantly.
Tony, what grade were those two students, those three students that left?
I don't know, off the top of my head, I do, I do know we had a ninth grader come in, I think one was a junior, but I'm not sure about the other two.
Thank you. How many kids on the waitlist?
No, that's okay. So again, co-op update, 84,636 hours worked, this is just the class of 2025, juniors are not eligible yet, they'll be eligible in a week or so, so that, again, we'll start to include the class of 26 in this as well. We're up to 65%, 209 students are participating, supporting 183 employers, and the class of 2025 has earned $1,409,535 to date in gross earnings. Breakdown by community, it was five, five of our Bedford students participating, 72 students from Bill Ricka, 15 from Burlington, 48 from Tewksbury, 69 from Wilmington, and like I said, 209 out of our 321 seniors, 65% is currently.
Can I ask, how does that compare last time, last year at this time? Is it a little lower?
I think we're in line where we were last year, we're a little behind where we were two years ago. Two years ago, we got close to 70% with the seniors. This is, this seems to be closer to, actually, last year I think might have been like 62 or 63. So we're similar to last year, but a little behind where we were.
All right.
Tony, just out of curiosity, the 35% that don't go out.
Yeah.
Are they, any reasons why?
Some students are ineligible based on attendance or grades, so that does, that does knock some of them out. Some students, you know, again, some of our, some of our student athletes choose to stay in because of the practice schedule and other things that go along with that. Sometimes it's a family decision, and you know, the family just comes out and says, you know, I, I don't want my kid participating in co-op, I just want them to, you know, to focus on their studies and, and, you know, and to be engaged in what's going on here. Sometimes what happens is we have kids that go out and they may get laid off. I know in some of our construction programs, the numbers are higher for them in the fall, and then as the, you know, as the weather gets colder, and that, that business kind of slows down a little bit, we'll see basering kids come back, we'll see carpentry kids come back, we'll see, you know, some of those, some of the trades that are slowing down for the winter won't necessarily keep our kids on, on long term. And, and sometimes kids go out and, you know, they're, they're just not a good fit for that particular employer or that particular business, and Mr. Smith is really good about, you know, if a kid, a kid isn't successful, to try to figure out, you know, what it is and what they struggle with, and then try to find something that's, that's more appropriate for them and get them back out if we can.
Do we keep track of wages for the kids? Like, do we know what they earn? I know the 1.4 million, but.
Yeah, so every.
So it's probably, it's probably by field or trade.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's actually a co-op contract for each employer.
Okay.
So, and, and in that, it specifies the work hours, it specifies the pay rate, we collect information on their work, it's comp insurance, we go out, we do a site visit to make sure that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a safe working environment for the students, but yeah, all of that is tracked through the co-op office.
And Tony, what's their schedule? Is it, do they do this every day for months on end, or do they do it a week and then academic week, is that what it is?
Yeah, so it's, it's.
It's like their shop.
Yeah, yeah, so they're normally, they're normally scheduled shop times when they would go out to work, so it's every other week, yeah, yeah.
Have you ever heard, it might be anecdotally, is transportation ever an issue?
We've had some kids that that's come up as an issue, and we did have some conversations around Title I, and if there was a way that we could possibly use Title I funds to try to, to try to help out with that, we found the answer was no. So again, what, 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 and again, this is anecdotal, but I think what ends up happening is we have kids that kind of carpool, so you know, if they, if they're working somewhere, you know, at the same place or close to where one of their friends are, you know, sometimes they'll share, and I think sometimes students do that just to cut down on the cost of gas, you know, you'll get two or three people together and kind of do that piece, but yeah. It has come up a couple of times, it, I don't hear about it a lot, but I know we've had, we've had a couple of specific instances where it was a little bit of a struggle for kids.
Do you feel like there's not opportunity for them to have, like, if everybody wants to go, do they have that opportunity to go?
Yeah, and I know, I know Mr. Smith, he actually gets a lot of inquiries that we don't have kids to place for, so I think, I think the demand is there, and again, I think it's just finding, we don't want to put a kid out and not have them be successful, you know, and it's not good for the kid, it's also not good for our relationship with our employer in the future if we have to help a student to place, so it, it, there is a little, it's a little nuanced to figure out exactly, you know, who's ready and what they're ready for and where they can go. And some kids, you know, are successful regardless of, you know, where they end up and what they're doing, and other kids need a little bit more of a structured atmosphere, a little bit more structured environment, so.
Just to share, I had three kids who went to Shawshank, they all went out on co-op and had successful co-op experiences. My oldest actually started his own plumbing business and is now a co-op employer.
Oh, that's cool, great.
Full circle. Yes, 100%.
Admissions update, so offer letters went to 350 students on Friday, March 21st. I'm sure there's people here that have heard from some of your constituents already. They went out at about 3 o'clock, I started getting emails about quarter after 3, so it didn't take long. Waitlist students, again, will continue to be monitored, offers will be made, will be made based on communities. What I mean by that is in that admissions policy, up until April 15th, each community has a lot of number of seats, which I think is the next slide, which I'll share with people. After April 15th, we just go to the list, and regardless of which community that student's from, whoever has the highest score is, is the first one offered admissions. So again, right now, we are, we're monitoring that. Four out of five of our communities this year filled their quotas, and the fifth one came pretty close. So this is, this is definitely a change, even over the three years that I've been here, we've seen some real spikes in applications and the number of students that we're offering admissions to, and it's, it's having a trickle down effect because now there's, there's waitlists in almost every community where before it was, it was two or three, if we really had waitlists for. Placement testing scheduled for April 5th, Mr. Pigeon is working on that, I know he's getting everything set up, and we'll be testing those 350 students again. We use the testing to help schedule them here, so when they come in, we know, you know, what level English class should the student be in, where do they get placed for social studies, for science, for, for all of the academic classes.
Are all the waitlisted students invited to participate in placement testing, or?
We decided not to do that this year because the consensus with the team was that it led to a lot of confusion last year with some families. Why was I invited to test, but I'm still on the waitlist? So we, that was kind of a one-time experiment, it didn't really quite play out the way that we had anticipated, so we're going to start with the 350, and then again, if, there's, there's two more sessions that we already have scheduled, so as we backfill students, we can add them to, there's two afternoon testing schedules coming up in the, in the month of April as well.
And if a student indicates that he or she does not want to sit for the placement test, is that competitive with a deciding not to accept matriculation, or?
That's the way we've treated it, and again, we can't, we can't develop a schedule for a student without them participating in testing, so I, I think, I can, I can think of one, one student we had, I don't want to call it an issue, we had a concern with last year, which I think, again, the family ended up making the decision that, you know, the student was going to stay in their sending district, but most of the time, we don't have any, we don't have any issues at all with the kids showing up, and it's, it's a Saturday morning, they, they come in, they're usually in here early, starting about 8:00, 30:00 in the morning, most of them are done by 10:30, 11 o'clock, and they're out of here, so, yeah.
So Tony, do the departments, I'm sorry, the departments, do they create their own tests, or is it a standardized test that?
So we had moved to a standardized test last year, I shouldn't say standardized, a commercially produced test last year, and the company that we're using, I don't know if they've got bought up or they went out of business, so we are back to kind of our homegrown version. We are looking for something that is a little bit more. Nor, they, thank you, that, that's the term I was looking for, so again, we can, we can start to utilize that from year to year, and we're not, we're not spending as much time scoring and classifying and grading results.
Would it make sense to ask the other school districts what they use for, for in-house testing?
And we've had some of those conversations, it, it, people are kind of all over the place, and again, I've, I've been working with our director of academic programs, and I know she is also reaching out to try to get some more information around that as well, that is, that's kind of a work in progress.
Some of the districts don't test going into eighth grade, they, going into ninth grade, they use previous year's classes, where I believe at one point we were specifically testing, so it was sort of a, a clean slate, everybody was getting, was taking the same test as they entered, so it was.
I mean, we, we have, we have five kind of like large, larger feeding middle schools, but, I mean, I know when we've looked in, in years past, we've, we've gotten kids from 12 or 15 different, you know, middle school programs, so again, to find consistency across, you know, some of our smaller faith-based programs versus, you know, our, our middle schools versus, you know, it's, it's, it's not, and there's some charter school students that apply, it's not real ea, it's not real easy to, to find, too, so that's why we've been using that method.
Just to add, nobody gets cut, everybody, nobody gets. Oh, no, no, just, it's replacement.
Yeah, this is just replacement.
No, but I mean, our waitlist, everybody, if you, if you don't, if you're not accepted in the first 350, nobody has told you, can't come, everybody's put on the.
Because of math and English.
Yes, yep.
Testing, because I used to monitor, product of those.
Yeah, and part of the conversation has been, is there a way that we can develop something that would be like English, social studies, and science to kind of.
Yeah, when I first started working there, I wondered why we tested, because we don't know what these kids commit with, or kind of put them on an equal playing field, yeah, until we can schedule their classes that way, so, yeah, so it has to happen.
Yeah.
We get the good thing.
For the kids that are waitlisted, when, what can we tell the people that have reached out to us?
So I know as of this morning, we've had, we've had 10 students that have, withdrawn isn't the right term, but have said, thank you, but no thank you. The people that are on the waitlist, my best advice is, is be patient. We went through, I want to say 75 or 80 kids on the waitlist last year. No, I'm not saying that's going to happen again, and that that's no indicator of, you know, future performance here, but typically there is some movement, we have kids that, you know, apply to maybe two or three different schools for high school, and then will sit down with their family and make those decisions. So again, there's definitely a possibility, and that is monitored in real time. Mr. Pigeon and Ms. Ferguson are very good about being on top of that, and I know, I believe they're planning on updating 10 or 12 families this week as to whether they've moved off the waitlist or not, so some of those may change. So again, just in anticipation of, of some of the questions that came up, so we accepted 30, 31 Bedford students, we waitlisted zero, because Bedford was, was allocated 35 seats, so there's, there's four, there's still four open Bedford seats, we have to hold those till April 15th. If a Bedford student comes forward between now and then, they're kind of automatically in, just based on community allocations. Bill Ricka, we sent acceptances to 114, that is, that is their 32.4%. We have 78 students waitlisted from Bill Ricka. Burlington, we accepted 57, we have 21 waitlisted, which I think may be the first time in many, many years that we've waitlisted Burlington students, and again, that, that's the, the 57 is their 16.32% of enrollment. Tewksbury, we accepted 83, waitlisted 41, and again, that, that 83 is, is their percentage. And then Wilmington, we accepted 61 and waitlisted 33. I will say, I, I've, I've probably had maybe 15 or 20 appeals already, in looking at them, the scores this year are very high, so even kids that didn't, you know, there's kids that didn't get in with an 83 or an 85. So it's, it's really, students are doing well, families are taking this very seriously. I think, you know, the message has got out there, if you want to go, keep your grades up, have good attendance, you know, all of those, all of those messages that we've shared are definitely getting out there, but now what it's doing is it's compressing that, that delta, that range of, of who gets accepted and who doesn't, and I think that that's, that may be a source of frustration for some of our parents as well, which. Um, and I think that that's, uh, that may be a source of frustration for some of our parents as well, which, again, I completely understand. My kid did really well, you know, they scored a, they scored an eighty-five on, you know, the admissions criteria, why didn't they get in? It's because the whole, the whole pool of candidates is also.
And they do, on the appeals, like if it's medically related, attendance, is that considered?
So, we don't accept appeals directly from parents or students.
Okay.
So, um, what they'll do, again, when I get, when I get emails, I will look up all the criteria, all the scoring criteria, I'll share it with the family, I'll say, this is what was reported to us. Um, if, if there's something that's in a discrepancy here that you don't think is accurate or correct, please reach out to the middle school. And then I always put a note in there, you know, if, if you, if, if you're unsuccessful there, you know, please reach out to my office and we can set up something where we can, we can look at it in person. But we, again, we don't, we don't have people come in and hand us stuff and say, here's, here's twenty-three doctor's notes for my kid's attendance, can you update them? They need to go back to wherever the middle school is, have the middle school change or update that information, send it back to the admissions office. Everything is done through the admissions office. Does that make sense?
Thank you for the detailed explanation.
Um, update, uh, we've had a couple legislative visits, um, Ryan and I were talking about this the other day, and I realized that I hadn't really shared some of the stuff out, so I decided to include in my update. Representative Mark Lombardo, who represents Bill Ricker, was here, uh, February eighteenth. Mark came in and, and we had a conversation about, uh, you know, with the things that he can do at the legislative level, uh, asked about, uh, some priorities moving forward. We had a conversation about MSBA, uh, and the building project, uh, which was a good visit. Um, I hosted Representative Ken Gordon, uh, on March fourteenth. He is the new House Chair, uh, Chair of the Joint Education, Committee on Education, which is a rather prestigious role, um, in the, in the legislature. Um, he was here, we had a nice conversation about capital skills and the lab modernization grants. Um, I took the opportunity to show him the work we're doing in Metal Fab, talked to him about our masonry expansion project. Um, he is, um, very in tune with some of the things that are going on, some of the discussions that are going on about admissions lotteries, uh, about the expansion of seats, um, about the funding formula and increasing the reimbursement rate for MSBA projects for vocational schools. Um, and, um, we had, we had a good, we had a good visit, and he has already reached out about getting more involved and coming to more Shawshank events. So, um, I, I anticipate seeing him around here more, and, um, hopefully, this is the sign of more things to come, so. It was, it was a good visit, we had a good conversation. Um, just an update from the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. I, I had sent stuff out to this group, um, I've sent stuff out to staff here as well. Those changes to the regulations are out for public comment. Um, there is an online form, uh, and again, if people need it, I can send it to you, and you can, you can forward it to people, just please let me know. It is, um, it's been changed at least twice that I know of. Um, so it seems like the Board of Education and the Department of Education are modifying the format as they go for public comment. I'll keep my comments to myself. Um, that is, that is one way to provide, uh, feedback, you can also, you know, you can also write to, Catherine Craven is the, is the Chair of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, Pat Tutweiler is now the Commissioner and the Secretary. Um, again, another strange thing, uh, the Governor's Office, the Lieutenant Governor's Office, any of your local legislators, um, you know, we've, I've sent out stuff, you know, on behalf of the school and, and, and kind of sharing some of my views and, and advocating for things that I think should be in that or not be in that. Um, a resource that was shared with me last week that I wasn't aware of, the Governor's Constituent Services Office. Um, I was told that that is the only resource in the state that the governor actually checks in with on a daily basis. So if you would like to call the Constituent Services Office and explain to them your concerns, um, things you like, things you don't like, whatever it might be, um, I was told that that's a very good way to get that information in front of the governor, uh, because it is checked on a daily basis. Um, the current proposal, I, I think everybody here is aware, but I just wanted to, to just reiterate this, is what they're, what they're referring to is a weighted lottery. So essentially, um, if you don't have more than twenty-seven absence, unexcused absences, uh, you get an extra ticket, an extra weight in the lottery. If you haven't been, um, not convicted, if you haven't been accused of a thirty-seven H, thirty-seven H and a half, or thirty-seven H and three-quarter, which are all very serious offenses, uh, if you didn't get accused for any one of those things, you get an extra ticket in the lottery. Um, if you haven't read the changes that they sent out about student interest and how that's demonstrated, please do. Uh, the Department of Ed is looking at mandating additional open house dates for districts, uh, mandating how we share that information, which could all have budget impacts on what we have to pay for as a district and how it has to go out there. Um, and there's little or no, uh, consequences for sending districts for not sharing information back and being reciprocal in that relationship. So a, again, uh, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on. Um, the thing that I found the most alarming was it came out on February twenty-fifth, they put out kind of a version that I think nobody loved, but a lot of people were like, okay, we, you know, this is tolerable. Um, came back on March tenth, uh, and kind of had some wholesale changes to that, and it didn't even look like the same document. Um, I think that that really kind of, um, put a lot of people on edge. The, the one thing I can say is the more voices that they hear, the better. Um, I'm sure that the proponents of the lottery are also mobilizing on their side, and I'm sure they're, they're providing their feedback about the reasons that this is important and why it should go through. So again, um, you know, I would encourage people to get involved, uh, I'm sure everybody has a different slant on this. Um, I've looked at, you know, I've looked at this as a superintendent, I've looked at it as a parent, I've looked at it as a vocational school graduate, uh, so I've, I, I think I sent them like a three-page letter by the time I was all done, um, but again, those are, those are perspectives that they need to hear from. Um, and the more people that they hear from, I think, the more informed decision they're gonna make.
Charlie?
Um, the, what exactly, two parts is, what exactly is the online form?
So it came out from, so the Board of Education put out, it, it's, it's like a Google, it's not Google, but it's essentially a Google form. Where they ask you for your email address, what your role is. Um, initially, it had kind of like a, uh, a, a ranking system or questionnaire about the things that they were doing, they took that out of the air. There's some text boxes where you can provide comments about specific things, uh, and I want to say there's one or two sections at the bottom where like, you can give an overall, your overall perception of what they're trying to do, and then there's one that basically just says, is there anything else that you want us to consider as part of this process?
There was also a form letter of sorts that you sent out.
Yeah.
Um, how effective, like, obviously, if I can get Patty Muse to send a letter, personal letter saying, this is what I don't like about the, or I know most of us are against it, all assume Patty is against it, this is what I don't like about it, this is why, details, et cetera. Is that more effective than someone just copying and pasting the form letter and sending that out? Or is sheer volume matter?
I mean, I think anytime it's personalized, it's probably gonna have more impact. Um, that, so two things, that form letter was shared before the Board released this online form. So that was kind of an attempt from, from groups to just say, hey, you know, when they ask for feedback, here's kind of a format for you to follow. Um, I do think it's more impactful if it's personalized, but I also think that, um, the more people they hear from, the more impactful it's gonna be. So it's, it's kind of a little of both.
Do you recommend using the, the form that you sent in that email, or emailing the Board?
I did both.
You did both, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to you, I mean, whatever is more convenient. Um, again, I, I realize people also don't have the limited amounts of time and resources to commit to that, but again, you know, I, I'm trying to provide as many different options for people, and then whatever, whatever fits, you know, for your, your approach and your style.
Have you sent out the version that was changed on March tenth or so?
Yes, I think that version I sent out was that one, yep.
So then at one point, it was if you had too many absences or too egregious in a, a discipline issue, you couldn't even apply?
Yeah.
So now you, everybody can apply?
So now everybody that applies gets a ticket. If you don't have any serious disciplinary violations, you get a second ticket. If you haven't missed more than twenty-seven days, unexcused, it's not excused, it's unexcused, you get another ticket, yes.
Sounds like a lot. It's a lot.
Well, the state's definition of chronic absenteeism is eighteen or more days. So that is, so they're essentially saying that a kid that the state labeled as chronically absent is entitled to an extra entry into the lottery, which does not make any sense at all to me, but it's.
And you do have to request to go, it's not just every single eighth grader in the next fall will be, you do have to say, I want to be included.
They do have to apply, yeah, that's been included, yeah.
And then the, um, admission material that you guys have within the school that wouldn't apply at all, or when you're looking at students, or?
The selective criteria, no, no.
Whatsoever.
And what, what we, what ultimately this could potentially lead to is, uh, we would have to, we'd have to do at least six lotteries. We'd have to do a lottery by community, uh, unless somebody didn't fill their seats, and then every kid is in. But any, every community that had more applicants than we had seats, we'd have to draw a lottery for that community. The waitlist for that community would be based on the lottery numbers, and then we'd have to draw, um, we'd have to draw, I'm sorry, the, um, accepted students for those communities would be drawn, and then we'd have to throw them all into a bucket and draw our waitlist from whoever was left alone. Is, is the way that they, it's been proposed.
So you're not automatically on the waitlist either?
You are.
You are, you are.
But like now, right, like by now, we on, by now, right now, we honor the, uh, regional agreement and say, Burlington's got sixteen percent, you know, Bill Ricker's got thirty-two percent, whatever it is. The way that they're proposing this is once you've drawn those initial allocated slots, you throw everything into a bucket, and then you just start picking names. And your wait, your waitlist could, the first fifty kids on that waitlist could be all Bill Ricker kids.
Well, Bill Ricker's town finance committee will love that!
So again, there's, there's gonna be some growing pains and some issues in this, regardless of which version of it.
Maybe I was gonna mention this during the Division Eight, but maybe now's the appropriate. Um, Charlie, I think I had some more of these, and I should have made some. There is an organization of vocational folk, school committee members and others, Mass Voc Coalition, um, dot org, M A, V O Tech Coalition dot org. One more time, M A, V O C Tech Coalition dot org. They are posting a lot of materials, sample letters, communications, issues, their sort of guiding philosophy is they want to see the state, um, stick with the twenty-twenty-one changes, which aren't all that old. Um, I would just add, for what it's worth, to what Tony has said, and I think this is one of these issues where there are people across the spectrum who matter where they fall. If, if you watched the meeting, or the portion of the meeting on March tenth, and you saw the degree of changes they had made just from two weeks earlier, it's a little disturbing in that we, you know, there was a discussion about ten absences, and people were even begrudgingly, okay, all right, and then suddenly, twenty-seven absences over a, a year and a half, half school years, and the other changes, the weighted lottery, et cetera, et cetera, to the point where I think it's fair to say, even some of the members of the committee of, of the Board who put it out for public comment were feeling uncomfortable. Some of them expressed their discomfort, they expressed some discomfort with the data that had been used. And the fact that there were, of the twenty-nine, okay, of, you know, full-time vocational schools, CTE schools, that were really being studied, problems had only really been identified with one or two. And that remained troubling for some people, and I don't think, I think it was also troubling to some people watching this, because I, I heard this at a meeting I was at not too long ago. Um, Commissioner Johnston, who I, I don't doubt has good faith and good intentions, is heading out the door to Pennsylvania. And this is sort of like his last, one of his last major projects, is he's heading out the door, leaving this project behind. And again, I would say, as recently as this morning's Letters to the Editor, you will see people making comments, they gloat at an editorial the other day. There is a lot of unusual interpretation of data, let's, let's put it that way. But I think if you just watch the meeting and see that in two weeks, some folks go, go behind closed doors, they come back with a radically different set of proposals. Now, it is out for public comment through April eighteenth, I believe it is. So there is possible that some of all this input that they get will make a difference. Um, also available on the Mass Voc Tech website, that there is some legislation that's geared towards trying to get this back to local control. I mean, again, some of the issues that the, the proponents of the opera lottery have raised about certain schools are, I, I personally think are legit, they do not appear to be legitimate for the vast majority of vocational schools. Um, and so there's some folks that, you know, I personally, maybe some others, would normally be aligned with politically or, uh, on education policy, whatever, not necessarily here, um, on, on this one, and yet there's a sense that this will probably move much faster through the education bureaucracy than it will ever move through the legislature, because we know how fast they are. Or aren't. So, it's, it's definitely worth looking at some of the material and contacting reps, contacting Governor's Office, whatever, um.
Does there stuff to be like a town vote, like or like an agreement? No, if the, if the Board of Education votes on this, it'll be implemented statewide, unless the legislature steps in and says, timeout. You get to all those. And Moran, and I think Scanlon, I think, had put forth a bill saying that, that the, the Board of Education, even if they make a decision, should be suspended until legislators have a chance to review this. Or they want to go with it.
And a couple, and, and one of the more interesting, if I think about that February, and again, there's only so many hours, we all have to, to watch tapes of public meetings. But one of the interesting things about the March tenth meeting of the Board, were the, I think, three vocational school superintendents, who basically, you know, said, one in particular particularly strongly, um, you're basically saying that we're doing something that is almost intentionally dismissive of certain groups of kids. And show us, and you're not showing us, and they, they basically indicated a little personal and professional insult, and I understand that. Um, you know, and, and they all had their anecdotes about, you know, I accepted four, four ELL students, only two of them chose to come to my school, but then the Department of Ed says, oh, you only have two kids, that's disproportionate to the number of ELL kids in your district. Or the other, there are so many examples like that, so anyways, um, it's open season for comment.
Please advocate. Um, onto a happier topic, Skills USA District Results. Um, again, this, this happened, I think it was March thirteenth, I believe, was the day of skills, uh, of districts. Uh, we had eighteen gold medal winners, um, fourteen silver and twenty-five bronze. Uh, we've had thirty-eight students that have qualified to move on to the state conference, and that doesn't include the students that go for leadership events, job interviews, prepared speech. So, um, it'll probably be closer to fifty-five, I'm gonna say, maybe a little bit more than that, when all said and done. Fifty-seven students total had earned medals, um, at the district level. And, uh, we had an assembly yesterday afternoon, um, on Monday, March twenty-fourth, to recognize the students from Shawshank that had won, uh, some type of district award. Uh, breakdown was as follows, we had three Bedford students, two golds and a bronze, uh, seventeen medals from Bill Ricker, six gold, two silver and nine bronze. We had three winners from Burlington, uh, all were silver medals. Tuxbury, uh, was our, our big winner with twenty, seven gold, four silver and nine bronze. And then Wilmington had fourteen with three gold, five silver and six bronze. So, uh, more bronze medals this year than I think probably the past couple of years, um, but still, uh, nothing to sneeze at having thirty-eight students that have qualified for the state competition. So that's, that's a, definitely a, a win for us and, and a, you know, another, another solid accomplishment for Shawshing Tech. Um, and then just some, some updates here on the masonry project. Um, the footings went in, this, these pictures are a couple of weeks old now. The foundation went in, was poured, the, the forms are all stripped off. Um, they're out there, they actually, the, uh, they have, they've infilled, they're ready to pour the floor, I was told today. They plan on pouring the concrete on Friday, um, and sometime towards the middle of next week, they are expecting the company to come out and erect the building. Um, and sometime towards the middle of next week, they are expecting the company to come out and erect the building. So the steel people will be here. They said Wednesday originally. Now they're talking about maybe next Thursday. So that project is definitely moving forward. Um, we're making some, some significant progress on that. Um, and again, I will keep people updated as, as that moves along further. But, um, from the February meeting to now, uh, we went from a couple of holes in the ground to the foundation done and the floor should be in Friday. And, uh, again, the, the BL, uh, the prefab building has been on site since, I don't know, maybe September, October. So it's all here. It's all ready to go up.
It got dusty.
Yeah, we might, we might have to dust it off a little bit, but it should go up quickly. Um, they told us initially that it's about a week or week and a half to put that building up complete. So, um, by the next school committee meeting, hopefully I have some pictures of that space all closed in. And, um, I was maybe even starting to wrap up some of that project. So.
For Sarah's benefit, you wonder why we got, we got hung up on a lot of red tape. So this thing.
The early process got dragged out a little bit longer than it needed to.
Tony, I'll be wait, I'll be there. The day we cut the red.
I was gonna say, we'll have a nice ribbon cutting.
So we'll get to the finish line.
We invite the town officials.
My who?
Town officials.
Who's left?
I know.
Yeah, we're having a little issues. Anyway.
Questions? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. We have subcommittee reports. First, uh, go to Kent. The organizational development subcommittee had a meeting, uh, last, late last month, earlier this month, sometime.
We had a meeting. Twenty-seven? Almost. We got there.
March fifth, I believe is correct.
Chuck, my days. Uh, yeah. So we had our meeting, actually it was March fourth. March fourth, we had a meeting of the organizational development subcommittees, myself, Taryn and Brian and Nancy was on it, but she was off, the three of us and Tony attended. So we discussed the, uh, review of the administrative pay structure we did last year, just kind of a review, kind of what we did. So Tony was gracious enough to, um, go review that for us again, which I think looks in good order. Um, and then Tony was going to talk about the fiscal year administrative organization that he kind of presented, not to vote or just of like.
Just an update?
Yeah, just nothing.
So we had talked about, and, and actually the posting has gone out since that meeting. Um, so, uh, we had a conversation about, we currently have a director of communications and community outreach position. Um, so part of that restructuring is we're gonna, um, we're not, we're not going to bring that role back next year. Um, but we're looking at adding somebody as a director of curriculum, instruction and assessment. Uh, we had some conversations about how to, um, uh, how to parse out some of the, some of the job responsibilities that went along with that role. Um, as part of this change, our current director of, uh, data admissions and assessment. So, uh, Mr. Pigeon will no longer be doing MCAS. That piece will switch to this new role. Uh, Mr. Pigeon will pick up some more of the recruitment and outreach stuff, um, the project explore piece of it. It just made sense to kind of align all those things with one person so that he starts with seventh graders and seventh grade families and parents. He goes out and does the eighth grade presentations, does the interviews, um, does all the acceptance stuff. So, um, we're working through that. Um, we had a conversation about, um, bringing on, um, a PR firm to do, uh, to continue with the social media postings, the, the website information, uh, you know, some more of that outreach stuff, um, which we plan on starting, um, probably May first at this point in time. So, um, all those conversations took place about what that's going to look like and how that role is going to shake out. And, um, the leadership, I went back to the leadership team, the leadership team and, uh, work to, to write the job description and to kind of fine tune it and to work through some more of those things. So we'll leave it posted last week. So, um, we've already got some applicants for it and then the, uh, the leadership team will move forward. The position will report to the principal. So, um, again, it's, it's, um, it's a little bit of a change in structure. Um, where our director of communications and community outreach was more of a, uh, I, I don't like the term district level, but I can't think of anything else off the top of my head. It was more of a district level position. This will be more of a, a building level position that will support, um, the administrative staff. And, um, we have some, we have some plans moving forward as we move into a new schedule, uh, updating curriculum, realigning curriculum, making some changes to the social studies offerings, some changes to the science offerings. Um, and this, I think this person will be instrumental in pulling all that stuff together. So.
Just one of the questions is about like, as you're switching to, uh, everything's been done through one person doing the outreach, like the updates, is there going to be like, it's one of the things that was discussed was about the PR firm, like from an oversight perspective, is going to be, yeah, monitor that and kind of manage that process. Is there any like concerns about the fact you're going from in-house to basically, you know, not being farmed out, but I mean, it's a firm doing it, but you still need some level of like, you know, oversight. So has that been discussed with like, who's going to do that, what that process will look like?
With the team?
Yeah, like in general.
I haven't got to that point yet. I have, I'm, I haven't had a follow-up meeting with the PR firm yet. So I need to find out from them kind of what their structure and their organization is. Um, and we had talked about, they, they had talked about a couple of different approaches that they've used at other schools. So again, having that conversation with them and then going back to the leadership group and saying, you know, here's the options that we have, which one makes most, the most sense. Um, and, and we'll figure that out.
Yep. Patty?
I got two questions. Um, is someone losing a job here?
Yes. So.
Are they moving somewhere else in the building or no?
No. The, uh, that position was, was notified last year that, that it was going to go away.
And the other question is, what is the increased cost to us?
So there shouldn't be any because the person is going to fall in the same spot on the salary scale. And then we looked at the budget when we were going through this and there is money budgeted next year, um, under the current, um, communications and community outreach budget that should cover the costs. Yeah, should cover the costs. Yeah.
Can I just ask a question? Just a leadership team, who's on the leadership team?
Sure, Sarah. So, um, again, we, and.
Sorry, Kate.
That's okay. So on, on Monday mornings, we have a leadership meeting. It's myself, Jenna, the principal, the academic coordinator, the vocational coordinator, the director of data admissions, our director of support services, our assistant principal, our director of educational technology, our director of guidance, our facilities director. Did I say the principal?
Yeah. Yes, yeah.
Yeah. So that, that's, that's the leadership team.
And you.
And I think I said you.
Okay.
Yeah, no, you started with you.
So it's a big group. It's a big group.
It's a, it's a big group. Yeah, yeah.
And it's every week? Is that every Monday?
We meet every week.
Oh, yeah. Excellent.
And then the principal also ha, she has, she has weekly meetings with the directors as well. So, um, we have, I, I mean, I, I refer to them as operational and instructional meetings. That, that for some reason that those terminology hasn't caught on here, but that's okay. Um, you know, so again, the, the full leadership team is more about what's coming up. What does everybody need to know about? Do we have to involve facilities? Does it involve ed tech, whatever it is? And, um, you know, the, the director's group is more about, you know, what, what are we doing in classrooms? You know, how are we impacting students? So.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
Other follow-up question from the meeting was like, maybe you guys could take a look at, I mean, not that you need a one position basically dedicated to that, but there is a lot of events, like Brian had mentioned, Bedford Day, there's a lot of stuff that gets out that that position was covering. You know, such a shape of going into like MSBA or EAD, like, so I guess I'd like to hear like, what's going to be the strategy to kind of handle that because there's a lot of like stuff, like who gets out there and does a lot of that work. Yeah.
Yeah, that was part of the conversation. Um, I won't say, I won't say that we've finalized anything, but yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you. Ken. Budget Subcommittee also had a meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met on March eighteenth, myself, Patty, Captain Charlie. Tony asked us to, uh, fit together to, um, discuss, um, recommendations for the fiscal twenty-five line item transfers, which will be discussed on the new business tonight. Uh, Jenna gave a very detailed explanation and I think we have more clarity on how we're handling everything. Uh, we, uh, discussed that, um, we will, um, entertain a, uh, a meeting, a meeting in May. Superintendent asked us to, um, schedule a meeting. We haven't set out a date yet. But the superintendent's asked us to reconvene in May, just to discuss where we are, um, at this point. So, um, uh, we, I don't know if, if, um, we'll talk about it later on about how we're going to, um, hold off on the POs of April fifteenth, kind of just keep everything in line. No, no panic, but just I think we're, we keep tweaking it and I like, we like what Jenna and Tony are doing. So, uh, we, um, discussed, left the, uh, left it open, um, after tonight, uh, to, uh, this, schedule a meeting in, in May to continue our discussion. Thank you.
And we will, Ron Fitt will vote on the actual budget line transfers a little later on.
Well, I got a key part. It's just basically like you've talked about, which is good, is basically, uh, is having like a regular check-in basically to monitor. I mean, like one thing could be like salaries. To basically make sure as that stuff comes in, like you're getting updated information and that's part of like the monitoring of the stuff. So it's good to have a, a good budget process you establish for the next fiscal year. But you need to monitor stuff. So like, you know, Charlie, your wrong point at last meeting of the budget. So you're not going over and that's being kind of monitored. And salaries is going to be probably mostly fine. But there is other stuff like you guys pointed out, like, uh, contracted services or something, good, good monitoring process. So that's was the other part.
Yeah. And, and again, that's, that's something we discussed that may need to have more of a formalized kind of proposal as to what that's going to look like going forward. Yeah.
Thank you. And the last bulleted item there, the Division Eight meeting. On March fifteenth, uh, Saturday, the fifteenth, Charlie Fiori and I were down at Tri-County VOTEC in Franklin. Um, I already mentioned that a major part of the, which is the, for those who haven't been familiar with them, group of school committee, vocational school committee folk and some superintendents and other folks. In this case, they also had a couple of the state reps that were referenced earlier, who involved in admissions and some of the other legislative issues. Um, the, the admissions matter that we already discussed was a certainly a major topic of discussion. The other major, uh, point of having the meeting at, uh, Tri-County was that they are currently at the early stages of the building process. By early stage is further than us. They actually have a big hole in the ground next to where we met. But, um, they have a really good website. If you go to Tri-County, um, website, covering the building project, um, they talked at the meeting, we'll go and do it here. Maybe appropriate, there's some other meeting, uh, we have on, on the MSBA process, a, a project. Um, a little about some basically useful things that they did and how they dealt with the town. Maybe avoiding some of those issues with conservation commissions and permitting and other things that happen. Um, and how they put their building committee together, et cetera. As I say, they, their project seems to be going well. They went through some of the same efforts. I think they were two or three times easily before the MSBA as well, before they got the, the go-ahead. So, um, it's, it's good one. I believe the, the superintendent mentioned that you are now part of a group of, of voc superintendents who have building projects at one stage or the other that are getting together.
It's been going on for about a year or so.
Yep. Um, so the great source of, if you just want to sort of watch a building project sort of and go through its phases, the Tri-County down in Franklin, um, which has, I'd say eleven, I think eleven towns.
Yeah, I think it's a lot of them.
Um, so.
How many kids?
About a thousand.
About a thousand kids. So it's, it's smaller, um, than, than us. But, uh, and the project seems to be going well. They have a, an architect who's getting fairly, uh, well acquainted with, um, I, I know this is not their only VOTEC that I think they have right now. Um, we also have a school construction contractor or CM contractor who, um, has done some voc work. Um, that has been very helpful to them. So it's, you know, there's definitely folks we can check in with. Um, let's see how the process is going. So, um, I think the Division Eight group will next be having a meeting sometime in middle of, uh, April. They haven't confirmed that yet. Um, so you, you, it's worth, it's check, it's worth checking the MASC website or your emails. There seems to be some inconsistency with which their emails get out, but it's, it's always good to meet people from other places. All right. Um.
That's on their website, but it must be.
Yeah. No, if you go to Tri-County's website, you go to Tri-County's website. Okay. Any old business? All right. We've taken care of all the old business. There's. All right. New business. Uh, first item comes even before the items that are in the bullet. Because I think, uh, memo was left for us today, uh, that a minor change in the current twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school calendar needs to be made, which, uh, coming up very soon. Well, relatively soon. The May second is going to be, uh, an additional half day for teachers to attend state Skills USA competition. Um, any questions about this or why it's been this hesitated at this time?
So this, this was brought to my attention literally this morning. So again, I apologize for the short notice. Um, this is something that, that has happened every year that I've been here and it's my understanding. It's been going on for a number of years. Um, we, we typically have an early release day for students on that day so that our shop teachers and our academic teachers and our support staff and everybody else can go down and actually see the competitions. Um, I will say, uh, it was well attended last year. There was, uh, there was people that I was surprised to see down there uh, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't have thought. But again, they made connections with students. They go down. Um, you know, they're, they're there to support students and they encourage them. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a great opportunity to give them a chance to go down often. Um, you know, if, if the kids leave here at ten-thirty, quarter of eleven, they get on the road, they can get down there just before lunchtime. Um, and you know, there's, there's usually still a few hours of the competition left. Uh, and again, I think it's a great, um, community builder for our school. Um, and I was, I was very, I was very, um, pleased with the number of academic staff, the number of guidance counselors, the number of support services people that made the trip down last year. So if we can continue that trend, I think it's, it's well worth the change in the schedule.
Tony, heard that? Uh, oh, excuse me, Brian.
Sure. We missed this last year when we did the calendar?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Okay. But I just looked at, I looked at our proposed calendar for next year. We have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Somehow it fell through the cracks. Yeah.
Okay. So the, the students are competing. They leave, they leave like Thursday, right?
They go Thursday out to school. They stay overnight Thursday night.
Special day Friday for staff that wants to go down and everybody else to see.
And Friday is also the day of the competition. That's the main competition day for the students. So, um, probably about eight-thirty, nine o'clock in the morning until about two, two-thirty in the afternoon. The kids are actually in those competitions and, and doing, um, and like you said, it's, it's a great. I mean, again, the more people we can get down there, the, the better I think it is. It helps, helps everybody understand the process.
How was the current last day of school since I do believe we had some snow days?
That I believe is. Yeah. Is it the twentieth? It's the twentieth.
Thank you.
All right. Having heard the explanation, uh, do we have a motion for the change in the May second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please indicate aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? All right. unanimous. Perfect. All right. Moving right along in the calendar, uh, we have the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar. Superintendent has prepared, um, I'll just mention this relatively minor change because it, I noticed it and I asked Tony about it and he had a quick explanation. The fall town, uh, the fall open house, which historically has been a weekend affair, has been moved to a, uh, evening event, um, which is consistent with the change, I believe, we made to the teacher's contract, uh, through the last negotiations. Um, I don't know if there's anything else unusual, things that people want to ask about with regards to the school calendar?
Well, I'm sorry. I guess I missed that. The, um, that was the negotiations?
Yes.
Because it went to a Sunday for years.
Yeah.
Like for study, it was a Thursday. So now we're going back to a Wednesday night? Do I read that correctly?
It's either a Wednesday or a Thursday.
It looks like Wednesday on November.
November fifth on a Wednesday, Tony. Is that seen?
Is the length of it the same?
Yes.
So it's going to be.
It'll be the same number, uh, same amount of time.
Sixteen, seven and nine. Okay.
Yeah. And I'm not sure if the exact, but it will, it will be the same number of hours as the Sunday one was.
That on the table with negotiations, I assume?
That was, that was one of the things they asked that people.
Okay. So they switched, years ago, they switched it to, Mr. Lyons switched it so more people could go on a Sunday. But I don't, I mean, let's, you're okay with that. They're okay with that.
Yeah. We said, we said we'd give it a try.
Let's give it a shot. Okay. And thank you.
Just one other thing to point out here, and, and again, Brian, I don't know if you and I had this conversation or not. Um, in June, you'll notice, uh, the graduation is on here for the eleventh. Um, the reason for that is in twenty-twenty-six, Skills USA Nationals is the week of the first through the fifth. Um, there is a conflict with the World Cup. So the World Cup soccer tournament. So the World Cup soccer tournament will be in Atlanta during the dates that Skills is normally held. They knew that when they relocated to Atlanta three or four years ago and were told that that was something that would not be rescheduled to accommodate them. So we looked at the calendar and what we, the reason that we pushed graduation and the prom back to the following week was if we have seniors that qualify to go to Nationals, we don't want to put them and their families in a place where they have to choose between prom and graduation and going to Skills USA. So this should be a one-time thing from what I've been told. But we did intentionally make that change and push it back. The kids will still get out on the same date. So senior sign-out isn't gonna change. It'll be the same time. It's just graduation will be a week later than it normally would be. But again, I don't want to receive phone calls about, you know, my kid's gotta choose between, you know, going to Skills USA and going to their senior prom. I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to deal with that, so.
Yeah, wow, okay.
I think that's the, a lot of Disney movies are based on those conflicts where kid must have to be in two places on one day, so we don't want that. All right, do we have a motion to approve the 2025-26? All in favor of the calendar as proposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, both unanimously. Hopefully we caught everything. All right, the next item, Mass Association School Committee's official and alternate delegates for.
School committee meetings.
School committee, what did I say?
Meeting dates.
Oh, meeting dates, thank you. Top of things. The list of the school committee meetings has also been presented. Thank you, Patty.
We're meeting.
We're meeting the same month.
All right, do we have all in favor of the proposed dates? You say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions also? Thank you very much. All right. Now, Mass Association School Committee official and alternate delegates for Sarah, our newest member. There is a annual conference of school committee members. Now, it is, I think this is the last year they're planning on it being in Cape Cod for a while. I think there's a tentative plan to move it off Cape Cod, but they haven't picked a new location for the next year, but we don't have to be concerned about that yet. So normally.
Let's go. Way in the other direction.
What's the date of the conferences yet?
It's the 12th to the 14th. And it is gonna be as of now at the Cape Cod Irish Village at the Emerald Resort and Conference Center. Customarily, we've had several folks here have attended, some have attended once or twice, some have attended several times. I think we always have an official delegate for voting purposes. And we usually also have an alternate. Last year, I think Gwen was going to be our official delegate, but a last-minute change, you need to change your schedule. Patty, once again, step in, take this on, and we appreciate that. So is there someone who would like to, and again, when we get closer, Karen or someone pretending to be Karen?
Be Karen.
Well, we'll send the appropriate information, registration and payment and all of that stuff. We'll handle that. But if, is there anybody who would like to volunteer to be a delegate and then an alternate delegate?
Karen mentioned it when she walked in the door.
What's that?
Karen mentioned it when she walked in the door.
I don't mind being the delegate. I just never managed to be able to do it.
Karen, are you volunteering?
Not willingly, but if nobody else will step up, I will. Maybe I'll actually be able to do it this year.
That's unless there is deep opposition.
When do you want it? Okay, I'm not twitching around.
There you are.
I mean, I like going to the event and I probably will go to the event, but I, like last year had that closing.
I know. You never know what you're selling that week.
Yeah, and I can't miss that. So it's like, I don't know, I'd rather if somebody else wants to.
Just asking.
All right, so we have a delegate potential. And do you want the alternate or do you prefer not to do the?
Well, I'm likely gonna go, I like going to the event, so I'll.
All right, take the alternate?
Yeah, I'll do the alternate.
All right.
And just to get stuck, we'll call Patty and abandon. We're gonna go ahead and open the closing.
As an honored lifetime member of the organization, Patty's always available, always there. So if we can just do one motion with maybe these two.
Make a motion that Karen Gillis, we are delegates to the MASC in Buenos Aires, the alternate.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please indicate aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you to both of you very much. If you oppose this, we have some other issues.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
Here we go.
The next item is the budget line item transfers that Ron referenced that emerged out of the last, both out of the last school committee meeting and the budget, a couple of budget committee meetings regarding things that need to be done to make sure that we make it to the end of the school year able to pay all of our bills.
So Jenna had included this in that black folder. It is the one that's.
For the salary.
Not landscape, portrait, portrait, not landscape. And again, just to kind of reflect back on some of the conversations at that meeting, we are, we have some salary line items that have surplus monies in them. We have some salary line items that are overdrawn. And what this plan is, is the plan is to capture all of the surplus and then also use that surplus to then balance out or zero out anything that is overdrawn. Again, moving forward in future years, we plan on doing this in the fall, September, October meeting potentially. Again, getting, kind of resetting that within the budget so that we can keep a closer eye on which accounts are coming up on, you know, their spending caps and which ones, you know, we're in danger of going over. We can have a better sense as we move through the budget and in a real-time kind of setting. We do plan on coming back to this group, as Mr. Fusco had said, in May. We have told departments that they have till April fifteenth to spend down their operating budgets. We will likely come back to this committee for the May meeting and ask for some transfers in and out of those accounts as well to try to balance those things out. And then hopefully have a much better picture as to where we stand financially going into the first part of June. So we will know if there's any summer projects or anything that's outstanding that needs to be done. We can prioritize that and possibly even get that mobilized before the end of the school year. So that is kind of the bigger picture of this, but this is stepping on at this point in time.
Can you just highlight from the last meeting, like basically like, like most of them are basically, they're just like leveling out where the budget is aligned with what the current salary is. Can you just point out like any ones that are like basically swapped so people are aware?
There's nothing one-to-one because the values don't match up. But the plan is to put everything in that 1022111 line. And then can I move it out of that line into the departments that need more money? The leftover is in this bottom line where it says on page two, there should be about $101,000 remaining in that category.
No, I understand that. My point is basically you have some that are like basically, if you say like take ELL, basically you budgeted X. You now know what's actual is this.
Yep.
There's some that are like, as we met last time, there were some that you had stated that were basically like, you know, in the wrong buckets.
Yep.
Is that something you just point out to people so they're aware of, like, that it's not like just saying, okay, this was what we budgeted for this salary and now it's about the updated salary, so that's what the delta is. But there's other ones, like you'd like point out, there's some that are like washouts.
I was gonna say, so like I know line, mine for the athletic administrative assistant, that there was actually two lines in the budget for that. So what ended up happening was the line that the money was budgeted into wasn't the line that it was drawn from. So when you go down below, I don't think it's labeled the same way, but essentially we were pulling from a different line item. So again, some of this is also cleaning up that system and making sure that things are charged appropriately to where they're supposed to be. I know there was a bunch of cleanup and guidance that we did. For whatever reason, it appeared that every time a new guidance counselor was added, they created another line item separately for those salaries. So some of this is pulling or rolling up all of that stuff. I know when you go down and you look at some of the, like the line 27, the paras, again, that was one that was billed to the wrong funding code. So it looks like there's a lot of excess, but then when you go further down into this, and I forget where it was, I actually think it's line 78. You can see that, you know, there's a $237,000 deficit versus the $212,000 surplus. So there's a lot of that stuff that we are still working through and cleaning up. And again, as we move into next year, the plan is to do this much earlier in the school year so that we have a much better sense as to whether that stuff's getting pulled from the line account or not.
And I'm also looking at the structure in Unis because we have a lot of lines that aren't used or repetitive lines, maybe with just one little thing off. So my goal when I enter that FY26 budget, it's going to look exactly like our operating budget. So Heather Dalton and I are working on combining lines. So it will mirror exactly what we have in the operating budget that we present to the towns. So be able to match those up. So some of these lines will just be unused. They'll still be there, but we will not put anything in them and we will not use them. So Heather and I are getting on the same page for that. We've started that process. It's a big project more for her. She's actually pulling every single name so we know we didn't miss anybody. And I think it will be worth it in the long run.
So this isn't that, there was some great problem, say, for example, with the special ed par salary other than maybe some slight adjustments for COLA or whatever. This is just, it was literally put in the wrong place.
Right, well, because there were multiple lines for multiple pairs and there were initials with these lines and I couldn't tell who they were intended for. So Patty said it was a mistake. I made a mistake. I'd like to go back and.
What do we call that?
Jenna.
We call it a Jenna. It was a Jenna. It wasn't a mistake. They didn't create the line, but payroll and I did not communicate which line was going where. So we're working on that right now.
You're gonna own it?
I'm owning it. I'm not gonna call it a mistake. No, I agree with Patty. It was a mistake. So we're restructuring all the salaries for next year and it will exactly mirror what the operating budget looks like for everything.
Thank you.
That would be great because we get all concerned about, and you explained what this overages and I'm like, oh, what are we doing here?
And we might still have to make some moves because we have projections and people will be hired and people will retire and all those things happen. So there definitely will be moves, but I think it will be, the list will be a lot shorter because we're gonna consolidate a lot of things that haven't been consolidated.
Just for everybody's benefit, can you just explain what the three were outside that worked? There's like coaches.
Oh, I didn't include coaches.
Yep.
Salary, so I took out athletics, substitute teachers, advisors. Yeah, because those aren't encumbered. So I didn't want to include them. Right, right.
Yeah, I learned that word.
Yep.
And because you don't have final.
Yeah, the year's not over yet. They haven't been paid for everything yet. So that's something we can revisit, like in May or June, like be discussed.
I need to encumber. I don't care.
I know. I don't know why they haven't done, but that's definitely something we need to look at.
Okay. And I think it's fair to say that as the budget committee discussed, there's also, you know, with some additional responsibilities at the department level to monitor expenditures throughout the school year. So there's a little bit less likelihood of a squeeze at the end of the school year. All right, having, there is no other discussion. We will have a motion to accept the budget line transfers that are detailed in the chart provided to us.
Just before we do, wasn't it past times we did this? Wasn't there like a formal thing together, like a write-up?
That was the end of your transfer.
Yeah, and I think the difference with this is we're not transferring from one fund to another. So we're not going from like general to health insurance. That will come later. Yeah.
Or at the end of year ones, it's like because you didn't.
We're doing fun rules, yeah.
Just to mention that we voted, the budget committee voted unanimous to adopt this.
Sorry I didn't say that, Pat. Thank you. I always have my back.
We'll see if that trend.
May has approval in the subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
We'll see if that trend continues. We have a motion to approve the transfers identified. It's been seconded. All in favor, please. Indicate yea.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item, the results of the superintendent director evaluation. I know Karen sent these to the committee members. So we want everybody to have a chance to take a look at them, look at both the individual comments as well as the consensus scores. Having said that, you know, you don't have an item to vote on here per se, but I think it would be appropriate to have a discussion. People want to make specific compliments, comments, or compliments, whatever, or other statements that either mirror what you put in your evaluation or what other people put in their evaluation and just get a, you know, sense of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So going over this, I really, thank you, Karen. I really, you know, I don't, as a teacher, I have retired teachers there. I enjoy doing this, sitting down. Took me a couple of hours, took my time. I think we really have a great superintendent here. And I thought, look back at all, everything he's done, what he's done, what he's accomplished, what he tends to do. And I just want to reflect that. So Tony, I just want to say keep up the great work you're doing. The enrollment is up, the morale is up. And I just go into this whole process here, trying to, we've improved some of our programs, MSBA. I mean, yeah, we, there's some, maybe some few things to do on the, still, we're talking about the schedules. Your work is not done. And as you and I talked, you're not gonna, you're not gonna build Rome in a day. No, it's like, you know, I think you just come in here, this is what, going into your third year now?
It's the end of my third year.
Into your third, time flies, baby, when you're having fun. So we're, you know, people say to me, what do you think about him? I say, I think he's awesome. I mean, you know, and we're lucky to have you. And so we just hope you stay around here for your career because I think what you've done so far is fantastic. I try to reflect that. And just the whole culture here, I'm looking through some of my notes here. The performing, the management style, we're going to restructure things. I think the schedule is something that's, hopefully, I'd like to see by the fall of '26. And then your continued growth is to keep learning because we're all lifelong learners. So Tony, so that's my two sets on the table, Mr. Chairman, that I'm very pleased with what's going on here. I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Brian? Me? Other.
Actually, we really want to thank Karen for all the work you did and reminding me that I was late.
Was that a mistake?
You gotta do your homework, Pat. You never, you always, you never do your homework on time.
My life is busier.
No, I understand. I understand.
And I would like to thank you, Superintendent. Decent job. No, you've done a good job. I don't want to be.
That's a good compliment from you, Patty. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I know, because you read, you read about the likely school committees, like going after superintendents. And I'm reading the paper today, school, two school committee members, I don't know what talent it is, are being sued. I mean, so I mean.
I would just say, I think, you know, talking about the numbers of applicants just goes to prove that you're doing a great job because we're all hearing how many people want to come here, which is, I mean, that's wonderful. It's great.
Thank you.
Here, look, our town's high school project will probably give you more. The high school project. No, I will say like the career, that the career tree thing, that's a really good.
There's been a lot of intentional, like, you know, the changes in the recruitment team, the video we developed, the career tree. And, you know, I'm glad to see that those things worked out as planned. I can't take all the credit. I mean, Jenna's in a lot of those meetings, the leadership team has come together and people have rallied around that and people have taken it seriously. Our staff members that go out and present stuff, they are all on board and they're into this 100%. So I appreciate the compliments, but it's definitely a group effort and it's something that we've got a lot of people that. and it's something that we've got a lot of people that kind of coming together around and I think uh we're seeing some really good results, so.
And the same thing with the MSBA, I mean, all everybody, Jenna, everybody you, like get involved in school. A lot of factor in that round is pretty good, and hopefully it'll continue, so that's a lot of work from you guys. I'd say that's really commendable, everybody in school, take a part in that.
Anything else?
I think also just thank you, Mr. Brian, bringing the kids in, even Burlington especially. And I know you tried all the other towns, with some success. The tremendous exposure, the PR is, is huge. I mean, you know, and when I first started working there, people didn't even know where this place was, and they were like, I'm not going there. Then they come in here, they go, well, it's a nice place, you know? You know, so and then uh the MSBA thing, I never thought we'd get to, they let us in that door, I mean, Mr. Jackson, Brad, so we tried. Like, I said, we're never gonna get this in, they open the door, I said, come on in, so.
It happens itself as an accomplishment.
Yeah, thank you.
One of the things I wanted to, to add to all the comments people made, um. One of the things I particularly appreciated this year is, it is, as I think I put in my comments in the evaluation, it's been a challenging and tough year for the administrative team in that there's been a lot going on. Um, it's also reached that point where you're settling in, you're able to exert your vision for the school a little bit more. Um, sometimes that goes over really well, maybe sometimes it goes over just a tiny bit less than well. But one of the things I have appreciated, um, is that there have been times when I have shared feedback I have received or other committee members have received that indicates, hey, maybe a little bit more of this, a little bit less of that, are a little bit different approach to the administrative team relationships that are, and to my knowledge, just the best I can remember, you've never said, no, that, I, 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 that can't be. I, I, I never would say the wrong thing, the wrong way. You've generally been acknowledging of something that you could have done or said better or differently or um, you know, frustrations or whatever. And I appreciate that because I think as you yourself said, there's an outstanding team of people here. We, in school committees, particularly in the age, in the many years since ed reform now, are very dependent on their knowledge of schools sometimes for superintendents. So we do have to get some input from other people and I appreciate the fact that, that other people, we all do get to have relationships with other people at Shawshank. And um, I think that'd be one of the main things we're looking for in the future is that that sense of teamwork and camaraderie that we as a school committee have experienced with you, that that is maintained and even expanded upon with the administrative team going forward. Principals, folk directors, academic directors, et cetera. Because particularly in the next couple of years, I know you probably want to be spending less time on sort of the business items of the school and you got, you and Jenna are making a lot of progress there, so hopefully frees up some more time. And with the school building project, there's going to be a whole nother world of things to focus on. And it, it's not, it won't all fall on you, it'll be a whole team of people here. And you brought some really great people either into the school, back to the school. But um, as I said, I particularly want to express appreciation, that when I, when I identified concern or problem, um, you have our defensive, you tell me, say, who said that and why, you know? That's not always the case in our day and age, um, and we appreciate, so that's important. And we hope that'll, you know, continue to be the case and um hopefully you continue to enjoy the job, especially like, you know, all these town meetings.
The month of May is not, not, not a fun time in my house, you know?
I will add to what Brian was saying, I also appreciate, I mean, we're always told if a constituent, a parent, whatever, emails you with a question, don't try to answer it wrong, don't make some wild guess, tell the school what's going on, reach out to, to Tony or to Brian and let them know and you're always very responsive to that. I'll be like, hey, can I ask you a quick question, I usually hear from you within minutes. Yep, sure, give me a call and, and you know, you help me figure out how to best answer a question. Because sometimes they ask a question and I kind of know the answer, but I don't want to say the wrong thing. So I, I definitely appreciate that. And the updates that you said, it's sort of this happened, that happened, you know, that kind of stuff.
I will say like for people that have been on the committee a little bit longer, since you guys, like you admit, I think it's, you know, a little less the way it was the first couple of years, we don't mean to go there, but I, I appreciate that you guys, you and the administrative, it's definitely, I feel like it is, but I think it's definitely, seems like it's heading the right, not that it is now, but I'm saying that's especially important where you go into like an MSBA project or something like that, so it's great to see that. Yeah. We appreciate all, everything you guys do.
I, I said it during my interview, I'll say it again, I, my intent is to end here, so I got at least seven more years, so. Maybe more, but at least seven.
Sorry, you say that every day on your way in, on your hour, thirty minutes driving.
I'm calculating the, I'm calculating the days, the minutes, the hours, the, yeah, no.
You stop and get gas, you check the tread on your tires?
I just put the gas in.
Whatever, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Okay, um, next item, uh, future agenda items, um. I have a couple that, well, we, we want to check with other folks. Do we want anybody to come in and speak in May or do we want, I don't know, just sort of a table? I was gonna make a, one suggestion, I, I don't know if there's a, a who who's a really ideal person, but it would be interesting to hear from somebody who can give maybe, maybe a faculty advisor or someone, like overview of where clubs and organizations are, so that would probably be necessary, so. I'm thinking of Kevin because uh I think we sometimes forget that element of our school that we have a growing number of groups, who represent a lot of different interests, um, you know, vocational and social and, and everything else. And uh, we sometimes you see them at the, the open houses or school fair or things that are like, are coming up with the cultural program in, in early April. So, yeah, Kevin would be a good resource.
Just a question, when, uh, April is usually our reorganizational meeting, do you want to plan, I mean, do you want to hold off?
Probably school choice as well.
It's also school choice now, I just, April or May, doesn't really, we went, and since you mentioned reorganizational meeting, yes. Now then, I, I know that our um, our next meeting is April twenty ninth. Um, the week after school vacation, by which time the voters of the last town that votes will have made their decision. Um, it'll be time for our traditional reorganizing for subsequent meetings. Um, so with that in mind, uh, we have tried to establish some kind of rotation between towns and, and school committee members to try to keep the chairmanship and other positions moving along. Um, however, I should note that a couple of people who would probably be next up in the uh, the batting order or whatever have indicated that they're not interested in pursuing it for the next time. I'm hoping that maybe some other newer folks would be ready to move up the seniority list real quickly. And so if people are, are interested in it, um, please feel free to talk to any one of us that have chaired for a year, Ron, Patty, Charlie, um, about the position. And um, obviously, if we cannot find anyone who's ready, willing, able to do that, we'll have to start the rotation again or however we do it. But I, I think it's, personally, I think it's been helpful to have different people, because you learn a lot. Um, there's advantages of longer terms too, but um, so anyways, that, it looks like we'll be doing that at the April meeting, so if, if people want to consider it, um. You may think you haven't been here long enough, but that's not true, you've been here plenty, even Sarah, come on, go for it.
Last town meeting is Burlington.
Oh, it is Burlington.
Last town meeting is Burlington, I think the last elections, is the hotly contested, uh, Wellington, DC.
Oh, sorry, I meant, yes, last, sorry, you know, it's, last town, or, last town election.
This may be more a June, I know it's our last meeting of the year, but it might be nice if the, if any further information has come down about the food program. And like I said, I think it may be June before we really hear anything, that maybe Pauline could come in. Um, because I'm thinking she's going to be thinking about that and talking with you guys about, you know, having a contingency plan if it's not decided by then and, and just what she's gonna do. I'd be interested to get an update if possible. And maybe the summer program as well.
Did you want Kevin to come in when, April or May?
Um, either one of, sort of, it depends on, I'm getting a little bit of a sense over here that the April may be a little bit busy.
I'm okay with that.
May is fine, yeah, it's fine.
Do you want to talk about the freshman?
I wrote that down, but I wasn't gonna say it all loud, but um, I mean, shop placement will be done by then too, so I don't know if people want. I mean, I, we can do, do D, E, N, O, E, N, D.
I had it written down.
And I can also, I mean, I can also include that as part of my report.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you send it to kids to get their first choice, second choice.
That's fine, you know what, that's fine, that's fine, but then, what, this is their last exploratory?
Yeah, this week is their last.
So they'll have it, uh, be placed
Yeah, it won't be next week, it'll be the, the first, I think it's the first full week in April.
Okay, gotcha.
One of the freshmen I know are already, you know, they've picked their first choice, they just haven't officially reported it yet.
Yeah, that'll go, that'll go out Thursday night, so the, the portal, the portal will open Thursday of this week. They'll have till Sunday, it shuts off, I think, at midnight on Sunday. So again, information goes to families, it explains the process on how to log in, you know, what, what they're actually doing. You know, they're not ranking their choices, they're picking the top three. Um, and then we already have plans on Monday morning to, um, to come together as, again, the, the leadership team will look and see, are there, do we have ten kids that didn't respond, or fifteen kids, and track them down Monday morning so that then we can run the placement, uh, placement program and we're off and running.
Well, you have program that's a for you, that's excellent.
Sounds good.
We brought that in last year.
Yeah, nice.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, all right, uh, we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session only for purpose, only to come out of there for, if there's something to be voted on after the issue that will be discussed in executive session, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, oh, we have to take a roll call vote on this, Gwen?
Yes.
Yes.
Ken, Sarah?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
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 Karen?
Yes.
Patty, Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, yes, okay.
Public session, we will entertain a motion and I'm sure collectively will correct this. We'll entertain the motion to vote on the pay raises for the identified non-union personnel. That the cost of living agreement, cost of living adjustment will be passed to those individuals as well. Do we have a motion on that? I know that I butchered it.
Some motion.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is for the two individuals.
This is for all the non-union salaries.
All the non-union salaries.
Because it's a budgetary.
Because it's a budgetary.
Thank you.
We have all non-union salaries to the.
Which will include those individuals who were under the direct contractual purview of the school committee.
And the percent is.
The percent should be in there.
3.75.
3.75.
3.75 percent.
I'm good, I'm good.
That is the motion. There's a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? One abstention. All right, motion to adjourn.
Wait, do I have to do the buyback?
Exactly, buyback.
Do the business manager set that limit?
Oh, that's, we just.
He included it in the motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
How about the other five?
The extension of your extension for her, right?
That doesn't have to be voted, that does not be voted by the school committee.
Okay, because you have any voting with salaries.
Yeah.
You don't say what he takes away from the bodies.
Oh, sick leave.
Buyback.
Yes, thank you Kent. Since we'll entertain an additional motion consistent with the discussions of executive session regarding sick leave buyback. Would you like to make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the sick leave buyback. It's in, was it in conjunction with the teachers' contracts?
To the non-union personnel.
Non-union personnel covered. That's discussed.
Moved. Seconded by Bob.
That's awful.
Okay, if it moved by Kent, seconded by Bob for the sick leave buyback $35,000 cap to be applied to the other non-union personnel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention.
Got it.
Okay, now we need a motion to adjourn.
So much, so much.
Seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No.